We'll begin the meeting with a moment of silence. During a moment of silence, if you could keep in your thoughts and prayers the family of Ann Trotta, who passed away this morning at 5:00. Ann Trotta was a person who was dedicated to her profession. She was a teacher for a long time. She was devoted to her church, eucharistic minister at Holy Ghost. And she was a servant to her town. She was on the Library Board of Trustees for seven years, three years as vice chair. She spent a year on the Cultural Council as well. If you could keep her and her family in your thoughts and prayers, it would be good. This is a meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We have a majority of our people here, so we posted the meeting. The school committee, the school department also posted, the school committee also posted a meeting just in case some of the people that weren't from Whitman decided to come. Some members of the public are here too. But it's basically a special meeting between the remaining members on the school committee who are from Whitman after the resignation of Dan Collydy and the Board of Selectmen, because it's our job to appoint a substitute for the rest of the year. So basically, it's a meeting for us to get together and to make sure that we have our ducks in a row before we go on. There was a preliminary meeting, Zoom meeting, among Superintendent Simak, Town Administrator Heinemann, myself, and Chris Howard last week, and we went over some of how we thought it was going to go. And we had really quickly, almost complete agreement on what should probably happen next. It was Lincoln's idea to have a meeting this evening so that we could get out to the public exactly what the process is going to be and so that we could make sure we have in our minds exactly what the process is going to be too. I also checked, we also checked with council on some issues, Town Council on some issues. Basically, it's amongst us to choose the next person. We've had three people show an interest already by email and by phone. I'm going to suggest, and I hope the rest of you all agree, I'm going to suggest that we ask those three and anyone else who is interested in serving for a year on the school committee to replace Dan, that they express in writing, in a letter, with an accompanying resume, their intentions to apply for the position basically, and send it to the selectmen's office by June 29th. June 29th is two weeks, two weeks for people who are interested in filling this appointment to express their interest. I'm asking those people that have already done so to do it again, just so that, I guess the field is level. Because this is the first public announcement, really, public announcement of what's going to happen. So there will be a two-week period in which people can send in a written letter of interest and a resume. We thought for a while about whether a resume was necessary. We kind of came to the conclusion that maybe it is. So that those who are reviewing the candidates prior to the meeting, when they're interviewed, have some idea of what they've done, what they're up to, beyond their interest in the position. After that happens, after the people send in their interest by June 29th, we'd like to schedule a meeting of us, the group, the choosing group, for July 6th, 7:00 at night, at which point we will interview those people who are interested in the position. And I expect that that night, what will happen is we'll then vote. We'll then vote that night for a person to represent Whitman on the school committee. Are there any questions so far about what we talked about last week? It seemed to be okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
That letter and resume would, I guess probably Lincoln prefer that via email or an actual letter to the office?
I'd prefer an email.
Okay.
I think we can make sure we get it, you know, there's a timestamp on it.
Distributing it to the rest of the...
For nothing else.
Okay, and then you'll print them up for those of us who are slow. One of the people, one of the people that was interested in it tried to email today, and it kept getting kicked back. It's the only hesitation I have.
Okay.
The only hesitation I have, so.
Can we accept both methods?
Yeah, either something in writing or something in writing on the internet, yeah. That, okay, and we'll sort it out.
Did you say they should go to Lincoln's email?
I would... Yeah, that'd be fine. Does that...
I'm just trying to communicate to those who may be interested where it should go.
Yeah, is, we all right with that? All of us? That'd be fine. He'd be the central person. And then he would see that all of us get copies of what came in.
And the emails easily found on the website?
I can just say what it is, and it's also on the website. L. Heinemann, that's L. H. E. I. N. E. M. A. N. at whitman-ma.gov.
And an idea of when the turnaround would be for the 10 of us members to receive those in letters of interest and resume in time to review before?
Before the 6th, yeah. I'm going to expect that we'll get them on the 30th, the day after the 29th. So that we have some time to look at it while we're having, you know, barbecue on 4th of July. Or whatever, we can look at candidates. Next question that came up was, how does the person get chosen? Simply put, how many votes does a person need? And there are two avenues of thought here. Our Town Council has suggested that in the absence of some clarity in the laws, or no clear direction, no clear direction in the regional agreement. It's clear in the regional agreement that the group of people who choose the next person, the person to take Dan's place, is the Board of Selectmen from the town where the vacancy occurred, and the remaining members from that town. We're the ones that choose. But then the agreement is silent on what constitutes a winning vote. It's clear to our council that it's not a plurality, it would be a majority. Majority, it's going to take a majority vote to win the position, to get the position. So it wouldn't be the person that gets the most votes, it's the person who gets the majority of those who are voting. Now, there's two ways of looking at that, and that's what makes it a little bit complicated. In state law, when you're looking at town boards, it says the majority of those entitled to choose, okay? So that would be all of us. We're all entitled to choose. What if some, what if two or three of us don't show up? Well, that's where our Town Council made a suggestion. He thought maybe it should be a majority of those that are present and voting, rather than those who are entitled to vote. So if Steve felt he couldn't be here that night, he wouldn't have a vote. If someone amongst this group felt that for some reason they had to recuse themselves for voting. Say if my wife went really nuts and decided she wanted to be on the school committee, for example, might have to recruit, recuse myself from voting, then I wouldn't be entitled to vote. But it can go both ways, and I think, I think we could probably decide amongst ourselves which way, what way we think it ought to go. And I would think that the people on the school committee would have the most weight right here in this part of the conversation. So what do you all think? Steve?
So, Carl, yeah.
Yep.
I think it's a perfect example, because there's five and five. So we're 10, so we're, yeah, because Dan's not with us. So we're almost back to like where the school committee would be, in a sense, without saying you folks are a school committee at all. So you go with the 10, now that means a majority is six.
Right.
And if it's of the people present, and one was out, or you had to recuse yourself, or one was out and one had to recuse herself, so now it's eight. Yeah, we're going to have to be solid on the ground rules there.
We're going to have to know, we're going to have to know...
Whatever the decision is...
We need to know right now.
Yeah.
Right, what the ground rules would be.
But just talking it out, it kind of gives everyone a sense what would it mean. Now, we voted, obviously not a member, but we voted, I think, budget when we do in like a two-thirds or whatever, and whether it's based on the number of people there that night or the membership of the committee, and I'm only using the budget as an example, but there's many other things. But I don't want to complicate it with that. I think it needs to be as simple...
Do you have a practice on the school committee?
Well, the two-thirds of the budget, that's of the 10 members.
Of the 10.
It's two-thirds of the 10 members, it doesn't matter how many are there.
So, okay.
So you need to reach that threshold. I would think that we all would take this obligation seriously, and a majority of those present voting would be, one's going to be the same as the other in the end, but I think to set that ground rule would be fair and proper.
So of the people who are there?
Of the people who are there.
So if you're not there, you give up your vote? Or if you recuse yourself, you give up your vote? That's basically the advice of the, of council also. He thought that made sense. Do you all agree?
Yeah.
I concur.
Yes.
So it's six votes?
Not necessarily.
It's, it's, it's the majority of the people present.
In voting.
In voting.
Extentions would not count as the...
Okay, so hypothetically, if there's only seven people here, then the person only needs four votes to win?
Right.
Or be appointed.
Right. Yeah, it's...
I don't know that I agree with that. Yeah, I'm thinking there are 10 of us, and we are all current members of the boards, and I think...
I think we should all pledge to show up.
Right.
Right.
Just be there. Be there, and don't let your wife apply to be the, or your significant other apply to be the...
I'll call my wife right now.
Well, because the other thought would be a minimum. And I don't think we want to go down that road to say, oh geez, there's a terrible storm outside. I mean, it's really bad, it's obviously going to get poked on. You know, it's, the minimum is the other side of the coin, so to speak. If Carl and I are here, is that a, is that a, you know, we all know that really doesn't sound like it's a legal standing, but have we drawn it out that way?
And you have a, you have a practice, you have a practice of using two-thirds when you're doing the budget, whether the people are there or not. That's your, that's your number, so that makes some sense to me.
I believe that's written into state law for certifying school budgets.
Yeah. And also for, and also for town boards. The thing that, that made our council hesitate is the school committee is not a town board. It's a regional school committee. So he thought maybe you could, you could go with those who were there. I, I'm more, I'm actually, like Dawn on this, I'm more comfortable with having it the, knowing it's six votes, because there are 10 of us.
Knowing it's six votes and knowing there's five.
And if someone, and clearly, if someone does not get six votes, then you have a, you know, handsome stream. You have a 10-member board for the rest of the year.
The regional...
Or, I mean, or you have a nine-member board for the rest of the year.
This is our, Mr. Chairman, is the language in the regional agreement, it says the replacement shall be appointed within 30 days of the vacancy?
Yes.
So I don't know that we can...
Yes, we can.
We could choose to leave a vacancy?
I believe, I believe so. I think what that, I think what that means is that we have only 30 days to replace somebody if we're going to replace somebody.
But if we don't act within that time?
Then it, it's not replaced.
Then we wait to the next election.
Right. And that's happened, that's happened on the selectmen before too. We've gone through a year with only four members on the board.
Theoretically, we could come back a week later, re-interview.
We would have until the end of July, by the...
Right, right. So, clear?
Would you just make the, and that's a good reminder, the date of Mr. Collydy's resignation is June 30th.
I believe it's June 30th.
Yeah. So make that clear, make sure that it's known. So if we have 30 days, it must be from that date.
We probably could, if we wanted to, we could stretch it out. But my understanding from talking to the people on, in that Zoom meeting last week was that there are some things that you all want to get accomplished during the summer, and the faster that we can get somebody in place, the better. So that's why we called, that's basically Lincoln's ideas. That's why we called this meeting tonight, to get all of this out on the floor and start the process. Is that good? Are we good? Okay, do you think, do you think Laurie, these minutes will make sense so that people can understand them? Okay.
I just have one question, Carl. As far as the process of voting, how do you see that going?
What happened, I think what needs to happen is that somebody nominates somebody.
Yeah.
It's just like you do, you nominate someone, if that person gets six, seven, eight votes, it's over.
Yep.
Person doesn't, then someone else will get nominated.
So we're not doing like a ranked choice type thing or something like that?
No, no, it would be, I think we'll call for nominations. Someone will, someone will get nominated, and we'll vote on that person.
Okay.
That's the way I see it.
And keep going till we get six? Yep.
Does that make sense to you all?
What if somebody wants to nominate two, two different people? In other words, somebody says, I nominate Fred Small, and then somebody, like, and we get second, any more, like we ask, any more nominations like we do when we go for chair and vice chair, any other further nominations, somebody nominates somebody else, you know, you know, and that gets second, and then we got to do around, if that's the only two, then we have to go around how many people vote for this person, how many people vote for that. And if it's a six to four vote on those two, that's the person who gets the six votes, so.
Yeah, I agree with Salvucci. I think that would be most fair.
Yeah.
Kind of like reorganization.
Yeah, you couldn't just, because I would, I'm faster than Dan, I'll yell out a nomination first. You know, it would come down to that.
You're faster than Dan.
If that person gets...
He's younger.
I raced him before.
First come, first served.
Yeah, if you, if you, as the head of this, Carl, and you're going to be the one that's going to say, you know, John, yes, go ahead, and she makes a motion, and Steve had his hand up just a millisecond later, I mean, I don't think we could do it that way. I think we would have to consider all nominations and vote them.
Yes.
That's, yeah, that's...
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
That's not, that's not what council suggested we do.
I think everyone should have the opportunity.
I wish they were here tonight.
Are we saying that we'll consider the nominations, but if somebody hits the threshold of the six, then we don't go any further?
Right.
Is that what council suggests?
No, he, no, he said something different. Do you have his, do you have his... I was looking for it on my phone, but I know where it is, if you have it.
I don't think there was a full discussion of, of the, of how to take the vote. The fuller discussion he had was regarding the, you know, the members, what was discussed regarding the members.
But if I can recall correctly, and if I could find it, if I could recall correctly, he did suggest the process.
Here it is, I'm sorry. Okay, so he's speaking about the majority vote. Because it is a majority vote, rather than conducting a typical election, I recommend treating this like a standard board action, wherein a member makes a motion to appoint a particular individual, and the individual is only appointed if the motion carries by majority vote in favor. If the vote fails, another member may make a motion to appoint a different individual.
Right.
So there, yeah.
Okay. That's clearer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's why he makes the money he does, and I get paid what I do.
And just to be certain, not only minutes, but can Lincoln distribute to us, you folks may already have it, but we don't, exactly everything in writing, not only that we're discussing tonight, but things like that?
The voting process.
Yeah, because we want to know what in writing.
Lincoln, if you could get copies of that to the people, that'd be great.
Sure, I'll forward the legal opinion.
It's a, it's advice from legal counsel from Murphy Lamery and Murphy. Okay. Anything else?
I just...
You look puzzled, Chris.
Yeah, did he give me rationale for that? Did he cite any law?
Yeah, so his, so just for clarity, my questions to him were, in our conversation, the regional agreement is attached. Does a replacement need to achieve a majority of votes from the 10 individuals making the decision, or is it a plurality? What if fewer than the 10 are present and voting? And he speaks to the section of the regional agreement, and then as to the first question regarding the necessary quantum of vote, that is plurality or majority, the regional agreement is silent on the issue. However, a public body exercising statutory authority generally can only act by majority vote unless otherwise provided by law. And he sees, he gives the mass general law site for that. Although this is an appointment pursuant to the regional agreement, I believe the principle continues to apply unless altered by the agreement itself. It is not. Thus, if no member receives a majority vote, the appointing board will not fill the vacancy. And then what I said, because it is a majority vote, rather than conducting a typical election, I recommend treating this like a standard board action, wherein a member makes a vote, a motion to appoint a particular individual, and the individual is only appointed if the motion carries by majority vote in favor. If the vote fails, another member may make a motion to appoint a different individual.
So there's, so there's, there wouldn't be anyone who was denied the opportunity to nominate someone unless someone has received the six votes before that? Who go in series?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I appreciate our town attorney's work on this. However, I tend to disagree with this. And I'm not a lawyer, but this does not appear to be a transparent process. And I believe that we need to have all nominations come before us, and if there is a second, I think everybody should be considered. This appearance of the way this is done smacks of a backroom deal to me, that somebody's predetermined that they're going to get this spot, they're going to get nominated second and made a vote right away. And I just think that it gives the appearance that it's not a transparent operation.
Mr. Chair? I almost totally, I totally disagree with you. However, there's something, there's something to what you say, but it has nothing to do with backroom deals and transparency.
No, I'm not suggesting that.
We're, we're, we're in a room right now discussing a process.
Right. And I gave you my opinion.
I don't know how, how more open you can be.
I understand that, and I'm not suggesting that there be a backroom deal. I'm suggesting that someone could suggest that, and I think if...
No, well, you're suggesting it.
I guarantee you, I won't be the only one. But we need to be as transparent as possible in this process, so there can be no one that suggests anything wasn't done by the book. What can hurt with transparency?
I, my disagreement is that I think we're being quite transparent. We're discussing, we're discussing advice, we're assessing advice from council. We're having, we're having a meeting in which those who have things at stake are discussing the process, and we won't leave the meeting until we've agreed on something. But to suggest that, I don't want to say anything more to you, Brian, because I think you're off base. Yeah, Chris?
It doesn't seem as though the advice from council specifically addresses the question of process. And I think we should follow up and have them clarify, if nothing else. Because I agree that we want to be perceived to be doing things the right way.
Well, we want, no, we want to do things the right way.
Well, of course, but we don't want to be, I think you know what I meant.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, thanks.
Carl, for me?
Yep.
That being said, say we have five applicants. Let's just say we have five, well, we've already had three, right? Say we, say we have the three. Are those three, they will send us a resume, are they going to stand before us so we can interview them?
The 29th.
Yes, on the 6th.
Right, exactly, that's what, I'm, I was waiting for that answer. That being said, we'll be able to see exactly how they, you know, what they, why they want to be a member of the school committee. Maybe we may want to put all three applicants' names in a vote, and then we start from the left, and they mention one person's name for a vote, and go down the line, and if one person of the three that we interviewed gets six votes, it's done. You know what I mean?
We could do that. We could put all, we could put all names in nomination.
I mean, we did that, we've done that.
And see what happens.
Yeah, with the DPW commissioners, when we needed to do a commission, there was two people before us, we interviewed both of them, and is there a motion for either applicant, and that both names were put in, and we chose, we voted for one particular person, and that person got the majority of the vote, got actually five out of five. That's how we did it.
Put all names in, yes.
And the one thing that I think that that would eliminate is someone who has beat Mr. Boyce in a race, someone nominating someone very quickly. Granted, it was in a motor vehicle, not fort, but...
Where's, is there something else I don't know?
I was just going to, yeah, agree with Dan and mention that we did a similar process for the library trustee vacancy a couple of years ago, where we actually had to have multiple rounds of voting.
Yes.
Because nobody got a majority, which may be the outcome here, but if there are three or four candidates, we can narrow them down as we go and...
Right, so the one, if, if nobody gets a solid six, maybe two of them got four each, and then another one got two, the two four, they're up now, just voting on those two, and then the majority, you know, on that, that's how...
Or candidate may withdraw from consideration, yeah, things could change as we go along.
I, to Steve's point, I think before we leave, we just want to make sure we clarify all the potential, you know, things. It could be a shame to get here and then have things still be disputed.
Okay.
In terms of process. Yeah.
Process and, yeah, the groundwork, and just having it in writing, I think is, is good for everyone.
What do you, what do you think about having all names placed in nomination?
I think it's better than the other way.
Yeah.
That's probably the fairest...
See what, and see what, and see what happens, and winnow them out.
It's almost like an election. You know, you have everybody on the ballot, and the top person gets it.
Well, no, no, that's not true.
The top person doesn't get the top person.
Well, the top person gets the majority.
Once one reaches a majority...
Yeah, true.
That, that's the threshold, you know, to receive the appointment.
Yeah.
It'd be similar to a reorganization process, essentially, yeah.
Basically, that's how we do it.
With the exception of the threshold.
Right.
And if the threshold isn't met, you know, if we want to agree that the person with the least amount of votes would drop out for the next round of voting, so to speak. So that would obviously pare things down and allow votes to be changed as we're going around the table, you know, to, to end up reaching that majority.
Yeah.
That could work.
Okay, that, that makes sense to me, and I'm not sure we need to go back to council for that either. I mean, I think it's, it's within our, because of the silence on, in the agreement on this, it's pretty much up to us.
Oh, yeah, I don't think that there's any way that we're forced into the procedures unless we agree on the procedure.
Right, exactly.
That's what I'm, yeah.
I'm glad Dan pointed out that there was a filling of a vacancy of an elected position prior. You mentioned the DPW. It wouldn't be bad, how long ago was that? Do you know?
It was over Zoom, so...
Well, I was going to say, if we have a date, you know, we can look at the Zoom and just kind of get a, an idea.
It's when we were, that guy Tony, whatever his name is, and somebody else, we had to fill the position, and we picked the, oh, and it was the...
Mark Poria.
Mark Poria, and we all chose Mark Poria over Tony.
Okay. Gives us an idea.
Okay, so on that, on that, yes, Dawn?
I have two questions. As far as the questions that we'll be asking the candidates for the interview, how will we decide that? And second, is there any consensus among the 10 of us, because this person is going to be a school committee member? And I'd like to remember the role of a school committee member. We work towards continuous improvement in student achievement. So while this appointment also is going to come with a person's resume, which we know during a typical election process, a nomination and getting signatures and getting on the ballot doesn't necessarily require a resume. And while I'm not saying we should not require that for this, I hope that we'll keep in mind not someone's, only one particular background of them. Do you see where I'm getting at? I think it's important to keep in mind what this person's role will be. what this person's role will be coming, going forward this year on the school committee.
I think it's usually a good, you made me think of something. I think it's usually good when you're interviewing that each one of the candidates gets asked the same questions. So we just, we need to keep, keep track of that ourselves. I mean, Steve will have something that he wants to ask. Dave will have something he thinks he wants him to, wants to ask, but ask each one the same, ask each person the same question.
Consistent.
That's the fairest way to do it, I guess.
Do you envision all ten of us having a question to ask? That might, I don't know, that would be a lot?
If you, if, if you have a question to ask, you should ask it, yes.
Yeah.
I think so.
You think each applicant should be outside, and they come in one at a time, so they don't, a third person, say there's three, the third person will know what questions will be asked? That's what we did when we, uh, appointed a, uh, assistant, uh...
Yeah, no, I think, uh, I think it makes sense to have the candidate be here by him or herself in the, in the committee.
Right.
And not have, not have an audience of contestants. Yeah, I think that makes, that makes sense, Fred.
That way the...
Would we be out of line to ask, uh, the other, uh, for lack of a better word, applicants to shut off their cell phones and not accept text messages, et cetera, if people are outside?
Not with your votes?
Really?
Yeah, that's pretty cool, actually, I, uh, never thought about that.
Will it be on camera? Will it be live, recorded?
It'll be, it'll be like a meeting.
Streaming it outside, I think it's, I think it's the honor system at that point.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's true, too. We could put them in a, we could put them in a green room or something. We could lock, we'd lock them in the finance committee room, and then they'll, they'll die down there. Where's Rosemary? I didn't mean that.
We could torture them and have it during the FinCon.
Yes, yes.
Just having not done this before, I, we're kinda going around the room, and we're entertaining different ideas. But I just wanna be clear in which ones we're gonna stick with and which ones we're not, and, and, um, that's what I'm, these, we started to talk about the little, like nuances and stuff, I think it's important to...
Let me see if I can summarize where we are?
Sure, or just something to what's like, you know, after the meeting, we can review and say, "That's how I remember it," kinda thing, and then we get there. But yes, I think a summary would be very helpful.
Okay. We have a vacancy. Where the people that are sitting around this table, except for Lincoln, have the responsibility of choosing the person that's gonna take Dan Colletti's place. We're gonna ask for letters of interest and resumes be sent to, um, either electronically or on, on paper to the town administrator, Lincoln Heineman, by June twenty-ninth. By June thirtieth, we will have received the results of those, of those applications, if you wanna call them that. And then on the sixth of July, we will meet, and we'll interview each one of the candidates. And after we interview the candidates, after we ask some questions, we can discuss the candidates ourselves, if we, if we wish to do that. Uh, we can have a discussion about them. And then, um, we'll vote. And when we vote, and, and the process for voting, as I understand it right now, is that we replace, we, I will ask that each name be placed in nomination. And I'll ask that, that motion to be seconded. I guess we vote on that motion, and then what happens is we vote. And we see how it goes. If somebody gets six, six votes, that person becomes the, the next school committee member for a year. If we, if no one receives six votes, can we do it again?
Top two candidates, maybe?
We'll see how it works out. It could be two, it could be three.
Yeah.
Oh geez, I just sounded like Trump. Well, we'll just see how it works out. No, um, excuse me, I didn't mean that. Yes, I did.
I can't tell which one you meant and you did.
I don't know, he didn't... Is it, is it a bug or is it, okay, um, so that's what we'll do?
Come on, man.
My question is...
Yes, Chris.
Fred's.
Yep.
Thank you. Would we eliminate the ones receiving the least amount of votes? I, I just don't wanna...
Well, do you, is that, do you wanna use that process? That, that would make sense.
Yes, yes.
So I just, I'm just trying to clarify.
No, I like that.
Yeah.
Okay, we will.
If, just a small point, if I could, I'd like to suggest that if someone is going to send it in via paper rather than email, that it be received by June twenty-ninth.
Mm-hmm, right.
Just in case, sometimes the mail can be spotty, and I wanna make sure that
It has to...
we don't get something in after, you know?
We have to get it by the twenty-ninth.
Right, so received in the town administrator's office by June twenty-ninth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chair?
Is, yes, is eliminating just the, just the last person enough?
Um, it's, I just, like, again, I'm looking for...
I would think, and then we could just,
Okay.
you know, if we had to continue a process, then we just continue the process, and if it takes four votes, we'll get there.
Yeah.
Dawn?
And for clarification, all applicants who submit by June twenty-ninth will be awarded an interview?
Yeah, oh, yes.
And the nomination.
The nomination.
That's, yeah, that's right.
There will be no screening process, just to clarify, right, for the public?
No, they're, they're showing, they're showing an interest in helping the town, and I think the least we can do is to...
Give them the time for an interview?
Right, exactly, and to consider them seriously. Each one of them. Are we done? It's been a really helpful discussion.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you very much. And, um, Lincoln will send to you what our attorneys had said, but I think we're kinda gone through it all anyway. And so we know, we know where we are and where we're going. Okay, thanks a lot. Brings back, uh, brings back memories for me. When I talked, talked to Chris Howard on the phone the other day, he, he let me in on something that I, I didn't know, that he and my son were in the bands together at Whitman Hansen. They were both saxophone players. So I saw him play saxophone. And I might have even, I was on the school committee at the time, I might have even given him his diploma, I don't know. But we, you know, we talked, we talked a little bit about it, and, uh, my son was also on the school committee. He was on the school committee back when my sister was the chair of the committee. This is before, this is pre-Bob Hayes. And, uh, he was on it for, uh, he, he, he ran for, he ran unopposed for a vacancy that nobody else wanted to take. And so he, he made it. I mean, it's the best kind of election you can have when nobody's opposing you. And so he was on, he, he left after two years, 'cause he was going to law school, and he wasn't living in Whitman any longer.
As a matter of fact, I think we had to fill his vacancy.
Ah, how did you do it? So how did you do it?
From what I was told, and I've been asking, pretty much the same way as we're doing now.
Right, okay.
Probably with the last vacancy.
Good.
I think it was Patty that ended up coming on the committee at the time.
God, there's just too many, too many things going on. And, uh, we had mentioned Dan Trotter at the beginning of the meeting. Her daughter Michelle was, uh, the, uh, in the band at the same time, as those two, as those two guys were. Dance people are good. Is there a motion? Yes.